One, you're live.
Great. Well, good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting, Town of Rockport, for Monday, June 28th. We do have a fairly full agenda this evening. At the conclusion of our regular meeting, we will go into our wastewater commissioners' meeting, and then we will go into an executive session and return back to our meeting. So we will call to order, and we will start with our town manager's report. So Carrie?
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. I don't have too much on here. The big news and the greatest news is that on Tuesday, our new town manager, John Duke, will be reporting for duty. John is, for those of you who don't know, is a lifelong Rockport resident. He's picked up a lot of experience on the road, so he's going to come back, and I'm sure he's going to do a great job. Election results, the Budget Committee, new Budget Committee members, Clayton Tolman, Benjamin Lance, and Helen Shaw. And as you all know very well, the new Select Board members, John Strand and Eric Boucher. The mowing contract, so we only had one bid, and it was a bit over our budget. So Megan and Mike Young and I met with Tom Farley to discuss it. We couldn't get it down any, but we did learn a lot about the technology involved. And mowing, this blew me away, is going very high-tech, satellite-steered bondmowers. And they're about the size of a chair seat. They're very lightweight, and they put them on a field, and the satellites control them, and you put like dog-electric fences under the ground, so it knows not to run this over or that over. And it, like a iRobot, it learns the field, or you can program it. And so Tom said, was telling us about this technology, and after I kept saying, "You're not lying to me, are you, Tom? You're not taking me around here?" Anyway, he said it was brand-new, but he said it was where everything was going. And one of the good aspects of it is that Tom, like everybody else, is having trouble finding employees. So these require fewer employees, he said, about one guy per 70 mowers. And there's lots of details, I won't get into it too much, but he said that he didn't know if he'd be able to get any now, but as he deploys more and more, he thought the mowing contract will come down, because the technology isn't too expensive and there's fewer people involved. So just today, Tom called me up to say that, surprise, he got 35 of them, just yesterday. And so he is, and Mike Young are going to work on putting them on the ballfield and see how things go. And he said one of the really neat things about it is you program it to a certain grass length, and it almost continuously mows. So it's never mowing down two inches of grass, it's always just clipping it down to whatever you set it at. And so, pretty interesting. So that's the future of mowing, and it's coming to Rockport.
There you go.
All right, moving along.
So if you have an unmanned, if you see an unmanned mower, you don't need to call the board.
That's right.
That's right, that's right.
No danger.
And, and, you know, he said they were so small and so light, I thought, well, how are you going to keep them? Well, it's all GPS, right? So if you put one in the trunk of your car, we can find your car.
We can find it, we'll track you down, that's right.
Yeah. Okay, time shares. So before the pandemic started, I've got a couple other notes here on this. Connie Russell, the general manager, and I go way back. And so before the pandemic happened, I approached Connie about seeing if we couldn't mesh our systems together, my assessing system and the time shares accounting system. And my hope was that I would, because we have, we have 6,200 parcels in Rockport, 3,600 of them are time shares, 26 are normal real estate. So it, and the amount of work that it causes, my department and Linda's department, is amazing. And so the thought was that if I could output a list of owners and values, so account numbers and values in Excel, and the time, and the Samuset was able to upload it into their accounting system, we would have to do a lot less data entry, a lot less chasing of bills and for Linda, the lean process and everything else. And so, so we made a deal. Connie and I sat there, I said, "Yep, that's what we're going to do." Then the pandemic hit, and so things went on, on hold. We got together during the pen, when it was the first, it was the first meeting we had when it was safe to meet with, I mean, with masks on and social distancing, it wasn't that recently. And we learned from Connie's controller that their software couldn't handle it. It's so archaic that it couldn't do an Excel spreadsheet. But we were committed to try to work together, and we held this big powwow at the Samuset with a whole bunch of Samuset people and Megan and Bill and me. And we tried to work out how we were going to do things. We came upon this solution, which was, since we can't mesh the technology, maybe the Samuset could reimburse us for the amount of effort that it takes us to do this. So Megan went around and built a spreadsheet, she spoke to Linda, she spoke to me, we talked about how long each process takes, and how much the person who's doing this is getting paid. And we sent that spreadsheet off to the Samuset, and they accepted it. So, so they are going to reimburse us, somewhere I have the number here, $14,469 annually for that. So that's a tremendous tax savings. That's equal almost to a million dollars worth of value.
That's great.
And to my thinking, that's just a great example of one of our major taxpayers, you know, pitching in and, and good partnership.
That's great. Great news.
Okay, so what else? Payment in lieu of taxes, we got a check from Midco Solid Waste for $4,379 in lieu of taxes, recognition of services provided by the town. COVID-19 grant, Megan got, Megan, our finance director, applied for a COVID-19 grant to reimburse the town for all COVID-19 supplies purchased since the state of emergency through January 21. That was for approximately $18,000.
Great job, Megan.
And it also included supplies to build barriers at the temporary library and town office. Opera House update, Opera House manager, rental agent G. Andrew Weber has resigned. His last day is June 30th, that's Wednesday. This has been a top priority of mine since I started as interim town manager, because we didn't want to wind up without a manager come August, July 1st. Problem was, we had no applicants. So there was one person in particular who had applied last time, when Andrew got the job, that Diane was very impressed with. And so she showed me the application and resume, and I agreed with why she was so impressed, and I contacted this person. We had her in for an interview, we offered her the job, she sort of turned it down, but I wasn't taking no for an answer, so I wrote her again. I began to feel like a stalker, actually, this went back and forth there. But we're still talking, I have an appointment to call her tomorrow. But what happened was, as we looked into the Opera House, we began to realize it could be managed better. Responsibilities needed to be rearranged. The job description for the Opera House manager was almost impossible. It required both marketing skills and technical skills, which are really on different planets. So what, I met with Diane, I met with Megan, met with Molly, and we talked about all, I met with Drew, we talked about all these things and have restructured how the Opera House is to be run. And, for example, there was no department head. Drew was a de facto department head, but he wasn't really. So Megan is now the department head for the Opera House. And the people that we hire, the person that we hire won't be an Opera House manager, they'll be, what's the title I gave it? Booking, marketing and booking. And they'll report to Megan. And, and we've stripped away all of the technical aspects of the job, all of the department head responsibilities to the job, the budgeting, all of those types of things that we're going to, now this is, we're talking about a part-time position, it would have sucked a lot of hours away from actually marketing and booking. So instead, Megan will handle all of that. And, and this person, if we hire her, or them, or he, or whoever it turns out to be, can focus just on booking. Because in the month of July alone, we have one event booked.
Right, and we could be full.
We should be full. I mean, we're all reading and hearing about, you know, weddings that are backed up since COVID, we have none of them. And there's one booking came to us, we didn't find it. So, now there's a possibility, this one person, the reason that she hasn't accepted the job yet is because of her both family and time commitments. And so my current thinking is, is actually to divide the job up between two people. One who would be in charge of booking events like concerts and dances, and another person who would be in charge, marketing and booking, and another person who would be in charge of marketing and booking things like weddings and funerals, and meetings, that sort of thing. They're two fairly different activities, but, but the same, not very much overlap. And so if we can get people who can't, who are talented but can't commit a lot of hours, that might, you know.
Maybe that's an option.
It's still fluid, but, but the structure, I think, is sound and in place.
And I did see the posting or the opening is on the main municipal site, so hopefully that will generate, if this person doesn't accept.
But like everybody, you know, that's got hiring signs out there. I mean, it's amazing. They're just, people aren't applying for openings, like Public Works. I mean, we can't get anybody to apply for that job. So anyways, it's tough, but I think we've got, we've got something good going on, and hopefully John will be able to report some hirings to you.
I hope so, we hope so.
Yeah, okay. Just a couple of other things, I'll go through it quickly, because we've got a lot going on. We have, and it's on the agenda, we have a new contract with KIF or SIF for the Shotwell Drive-In. They were operating under the, the misapprehension, oh, not going to get into it, but they didn't have a contract. And they, so they were operating under the old contract, and we thought it'd be a lot better if we had a new contract. The only complaint we had about them, and we passed it along, was they weren't taking away their trash. So they, they're aware of that, and they will, they will make that change. Last thing on my agenda here is the Rockport room at the library. That was going to be the responsibility of the Opera House manager, so now it's Megan's responsibility.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I've got.
Okay.
If I might, Eric and John, in case you're wondering about the in lieu of taxes from Midco Solid Waste, I mean, we are part of that, so it's odd that we would get that check, but it's, it's a service we provide, mostly in the wintertime, I believe, with snow removal.
I see.
That goes beyond, I mean, they'd have to contract it out.
Right.
But we weren't going to do it for nothing. So I think that's the most of the chunk of that money.
Yes.
Now?
Oh.
All right.
That chunk of money is to make up for the lost tax revenue that we would get on that parcel otherwise. They pay us separately for the plowing.
Well, there you go.
From the, from the budget department.
That's why we keep her here.
That's right.
Perfect.
Mark, before I turn it back to you, Carrie, I just wanted to thank you. I know this is your last meeting as the interim town manager, so we appreciate you stepping in. I know you came in and did a lot of work in a short amount of time, so we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
One thing I just, I mentioned to Carrie earlier and Linda on the way in, but in 2012, the town dedicated the town report to Ralph Fields. And Ralph just passed away last Tuesday. He moved to town in 86, the same time I did, and we've known each other for many years, as well as Carrie and Linda and some of the other. But just read a little bit of what the town report had, because Ralph was, Ralph was sitting in that front row, and you knew he was there, he sat up straight, and I think he was 95 or 96 when he passed, somewhere in there. But his, his whole thing was, he's, you know, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, whatever, point of order, that was his whole thing. Every town needs at least one, a citizen who attends meetings not to represent a special interest, but a general interest. Actually, the general interest, Ralph Field's general interest was for good, transparent, law-abiding rule and procedure following government. Ralph never shied away from challenging the town's leaders if he thought their decision was made outside of the public process or cut a procedural corner. Although it could be seen like a nitpicking to the casual observer, it was not. Government, good government, that is, is totally transparent. The laws, bylaws, and rules and regulations that boards and committees follow are an amalgamation of local ordinances, state statutes and guidelines, and federal laws. They are intended to ensure that government, all levels, behave in a manner that is fair and objective. It can be a lot to keep track of and give proper consideration to. Ralph kept track, and his notebook may be of interest to the Historical Society, and the next paragraph mentions you. Well, it says where he attended all your planning board meetings, and then when he didn't show up anymore, you went, you went to find out what was wrong with him, and he says, "No." He says, "You guys are doing things good, I don't need to come."
That was the biggest compliment I've ever had.
But, but he, he, the 4th of July, he'd come, he'd come before the board to remind us of the parade, and he'd always have his red, white, and blue tie on. But that's the type of person we need.
Yeah, absolutely.
More of. We need people coming.
We do.
And he didn't object for the sake of objecting.
No, no.
He objected on a point.
He had, he had a point. Anyway, thank you for letting me give Ralph a little.
Absolutely. And condolences to Ralph's family. Sorry to hear that. Okay. Carrie, are there any, is there any public input to non-agenda items on the live stream?
A very nice tribute to the late Ralph, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Are there any amendments to the agenda? That anyone has?
No.
No? Okay. Our next order of business is to approve meeting minutes. Now, we are doing these outside of a consent agenda, because there are meetings from the April 12th, April 26th, and May 20th, that only Mark, myself, and Denise can vote on, because you weren't here. So do we have a motion for that?
I move the board approved the April 12, 2021, April 26, 2021, and May 2021, meeting minutes as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, the next, the next order is for the meeting minutes of the 14th.
I move the board approve the June 14, 2021, meeting minutes as presented.
Anyone like to second that?
Second.
John, okay. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, with the exception of Mark, who was not here? Okay, thank you. Okay, we will move on to our action items. So the first item that we have up today is to act on committee applications. We do have a committee application for the Recreation Committee, that is Jennifer Roper. I know Jennifer is not here this evening, she was unable to make it. So there is, Jennifer's application is in here, and I know that you have all had a chance to review it. Would someone like to make a motion, or Carrie, did you have a comment?
I was just going to quickly say that I've served with Jennifer on two manager search committees, and she's an excellent member.
Great.
I move the board appoint Jennifer Roper to the Recreation Committee with a one-year term ending June 30, 2022, to finish out Chris Christie's term.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? There's five in favor, thank you. And thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Chris, for your past work with the Recreation Committee. Our next item is, we have Christopher Fani, who is here with us, for the Opera House Committee. So, Chris, would you like to introduce yourself and give us a few words? You can step up to the mic if you'd like, sure.
I'll try.
See what Sherman thinks.
Yeah, see what Sherman thinks about it.
My name's Christopher Fani, and I live in Rockport. I've lived here in Camden and Rockport for a long time. And I love the idea of supporting the Opera House. I've been involved with a lot of performances here through Bay Chamber, and my husband's memorial service is here, and I'm happy to help out anywhere I can.
Wonderful. Well, we certainly appreciate that.
I'm thrilled that Chris is willing to do this.
It's because I come spinning with you.
Yeah, we're spinning buddies. But Chris also has been the one that has found the talent that's performing the Sunday afternoon concerts over in Mary Leah Park, and just has a broad range of access to community members, and I think she'll bring some great energy to the Opera House Committee. Thank you.
Well, great.
I move the board appoint Christopher Fani to the Opera House Committee with a three-year term ending June 30, 2024.
Second.
Denise? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous decision, welcome, and thank you very much.
I'd love to see a performance. I'm sorry, I feel fairly bad walking.
You're fine, absolutely fine, absolutely fine.
Happens to us all the time.
That's right.
Hi, thank you.
Okay, our next item up for discussion is our reappointments to committees for three-year, three-year terms. So there are your committee renewals, and these are the names of our committees, along with the staff and select board liaisons where appropriate.
Now, these are not all of the committees.
Correct.
These are all the three-year appointments.
Thank you.
I move the board reappoint all the boarding committee members as presented for three-year terms ending June 30, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. We have unanimous decision on that, thank you very much. Okay, we do have one, the next one is an appointment for a one-year term to the planning board, because John has served nine years.
Eight years.
Eight years.
You're allowed nine.
This will be his ninth. So, and he is willing to continue to serve, which is great. John has been a, a great asset. So we are, we are recommending, or we're requesting a one-year extension to his term.
I move the board reappoint John Veman for a one-year term to the planning board for a term ending June 30, 2022.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you, unanimous decision. Thank you, John, for your willingness to serve another term. The next item is an action item to reappoint Tom Laurent and William Freeman for the Board of Assessment Review for two-year terms.
Now, in this case, we wound up with everybody expiring the same year. I'm not even sure how that happened, because we tried to stagger it in the beginning, didn't work, so we're going to correct that error.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move the board reappoint Tom Laurent to the Board of Assessment Review for a term, for a two-year term ending June 30, 2023.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
John and Eric, you're fighting tonight. Any discussion?
I'm happy to let other people make their choice.
All in favor? All right, we have unanimous. Can I get a motion for William Freeman?
I move the board reappoint William Freeman to the Board of Assessment Review for a two-year term ending June 20, 20, oh wait, June 20 or June 30?
It should have been June 30.
June 30, 2023.
Correct that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, approved. Thank you, to William. All right, let's keep going here. All right, our next action item is to reappoint town officials for the fiscal year of 2021, 2022. In your packet is a list of the town officials for reappointment. These are annual appointments that are required by our charter, and we will make a separate motion for John Duke when he arrives, so that he can take over the responsibilities that Carrie's been handling. So can we get a motion to reappoint the town officials?
I move the board reappoint the town officials as presented for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, ending June 30, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to just say
Yes.
that these people have been amazing while I've been serving as interim. I got to work with them in a different capacity than I normally do, and it was an eye-opening, positive experience.
Good.
We have, we have good department heads.
We absolutely do. That's great to hear. All in favor? Okay, unanimous?
I move, should we just move right on to John Duke?
Let's just move on to John.
I move the board appoint Jonathan Duke as presented town manager, deputy tax collector, treasurer, sexton, and road commissioner for the fiscal year beginning July 6, 2021, ending June 30, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous?
I move the board reappoint, is that rushing too much? Do you want to present?
Oh, sorry. The next is the reappointment of the town health inspector for a three-year term. The town health inspector is Scott Bickford, so can we get a motion for that?
I move the board reappoint the health inspector Scott Bickford for a three-year term from July 1, 2021, ending June 30, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Trying to keep up here. Okay.
They're trying to keep that 12-minute thing going.
I know, right? So the next item, we reviewed these first, or we distributed, I will say, at our organizational meeting a few weeks ago. We had asked if anybody had feedback, we can talk about that. There was, there has been a change that is outlined in red here. We're going to make a change to the way in which we're documenting these meetings, so that we are documenting pertinent information, including the date, the time, the place, anyone that was present or missing, and then also the motions and any roll call as a result. They will become part of the permanent record. All other details can be, can be utilized with the live stream replays, so if anyone wants to go back and, and watch those, they're certainly welcome to do that. But all of these records will be held in public record, except otherwise provided by law.
And I think we should, because we're revising the bylaws, I think that on the last page where it says approved by the Select Board, it looks like when we revise it, we say revised by the Select Board.
Oh, yeah, we should add that, correct.
This is something also that didn't just come about in the last six months. I mean, we talked about making the load easier for those that are keeping the notes.
Absolutely.
Just streamlining it, because it's.
That's what started the process.
Yeah, it's become apparent, it's too much for one person to really stand on top of.
And Linda's done a fantastic job for many years of keeping all of this intact, so we appreciate that, Linda.
Plus doing all your other.
Plus all of your other work, that's right. So we appreciate that. Okay, so.
I move the board approve the Select Board bylaws as, well, as presented, because they're, well, except we amended it to add the revised at the end.
Yeah.
Yep, as amended.
Second.
Any discuss, any further discussion, or any other items that anyone wanted to see? Yes, no, okay. All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Okay, our next item is a new signed contract agreement for the MCEDD is in the packet. That is to allow for three days of Orion Thomas, correct, keep me honest here, Orion's time as the planner, and one day of Brian's time as the economic development specialist. Carrie, anything else you want to add to that, being closer to it?
I do, I've attended both RES redevelopment meetings, which Brian organized, and they were really well-run, good information. I think, I think that, it's good that we have these people.
Right.
Yeah, just a little food for Jonathan and Eric. When we had a planner, we were paying $99 to $101,000 by the time you added everything in. So we, we took a chance, and we went with Bill Nell Power for a bit, who works for McCab, and we set a fee of $70,000 for his services for the year. And we were served well, and we continue to be served well, at a lesser expense. And we, we were waiting to massage it one way or another if we needed more or needed less, but so far, so good.
But can I make a comment?
You can.
But I'm wondering if it's really enough time, because I think there's grants, because aren't they, doesn't Orion's time involve acquiring certain grants?
Yes, it does.
Because I'm, I'm wondering if we're actually getting all the available grants that we should, because I know other towns have acquired grants to redo their, some of their parks, including playgrounds, which is one of our big issues that we still need to talk about.
Mm-hmm.
So is he getting the time necessary to be searching for these grants where we couldn't be served maybe with a little more time in the future?
There, there's no doubt that we could use a full-time planner. But as Mark said, we're building our way up to it. The voters approved this particular measure, and I, and I would suggest that we revisit this next year at budget time, and see if that's a direction you want to go. Orion's one of the people I was, you know, talking about when I said that, people, what a joy it was to work with. There were some things on my list that I asked Orion to take over, and he just, it was just amazing how he stepped up and how well he handled everything. So they're both good people, and if you feel that way come budget time, it'd be a great time to make that case.
I'm just. I'm just thinking, three days isn't a lot of time.
No, it's not.
And there's a lot of stuff we could be missing without realizing we're missing.
For sure.
And I'm not saying he's like, I don't know him. I've only talked to him once on the phone, so nothing against him. I'm just thinking, you know...
There could be opportunities.
There could be opportunities that we are missing for grant monies that we could use to fix our ADA park problems and other issues that he just doesn't have time for.
Right.
And maybe we need somebody that can just specifically look for grants maybe one day a week somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, no, no doubt.
Okay. That's my comment.
All right. Can we have a motion?
I move the board, accept the McCab agreement between the Town of Rockport and Midcoast Economic Development District.
Second.
I forgot Mark.
I gotta get one in somewhere.
Get one in. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. All right, our next item is to act on Points North Institute's CIF, I think, I guess that's what they're called, lease agreement. Carrie, I know you talked about this briefly. Anything else that you want to add to that?
No.
Nope, okay.
I'm a huge fan of this. I think it was such a bright spot last summer during the pandemic, and people are so thrilled to see it back. So I move the board, approve the use of the RES site by Points North Institute CIF for a temporary drive-in theater with full details to be approved by the appropriate town staff, including the code enforcement officer and town manager.
I'll just add to that. That code enforcement officer has, I think, three permits for food trucks or vendors. All the permits have been secured. I have the contract here. I'll sign it after you vote.
Nice.
Might I, might I add there be a, a date in there so that it ends? The motion has no date.
Oh.
Or year.
The contract does.
The contract does.
Okay, well. It's running through...
Through October 23rd.
A period of use, but it doesn't talk about a contract.
June 28, 2021. Oh, no, that's just, uh...
That's today.
That's today.
Shortest contract.
Thinking fast on my feet here.
Yeah. Renewal at least for 2021 season.
Which they specify is the October 23rd.
Yeah, October 2021.
Okay.
October 31st, 2021.
Better enough.
Okay, so through October. Do we need to restate that motion?
I guess I'm okay sort of deferring to town staff. I mean, unless you care, Mark, about what the date is.
Why don't you back it up? Has it been seconded?
No.
No, we could back it out.
You can withdraw or restate.
Well, withdraw, and can I get a restated motion?
I move the board, approve the use of the RES site by Points North Institute for a temporary drive-in theater with full details to be approved by the appropriate town staff, including code enforcement officer and town manager, with the lease to end October 31, 2021.
Great, thank you.
Second.
Mark, okay.
John, watch me.
Any further discussion?
Okay.
All in favor? Unanimous? Okay. Okay, so we do have some discussion items. One of those items is we do need to discuss the appointment of a Select Board representative to the Midcoast Solid Waste Board. Currently we'll only have one. That's you, Denise, because Deborah's term expired when she left us, and we need to discuss how we want to proceed, and I think...
Denise and I have had some discussions.
Okay, great.
But she was gonna...
I've talked to Deborah too, because it's not unprecedented to have, like, Owen Cassas continued in that role even when he was no longer on the Select Board. And Deborah is willing, and I, I sort of offer her up because she's gotten very involved with a lot of things happening at Midcoast Solid Waste, particularly on the governance side of things. I have not been that engaged on the, in the committee work, which is really where the work happens. I participate in the board.
Mm-hmm.
But because of all my other commitments, I wasn't in a position to just sort of jump in full, full force with Midcoast Solid Waste. So Deborah would be willing to be appointed as the Midcoast Solid Waste Representative. We should have two because if one of them can't attend, then Rockport doesn't have a vote.
Doesn't have a vote, right, okay.
And I know Eric is interested in serving on that, and I think it'd be a, a great addition. I just feel like I wouldn't be able to participate at the level that it, Rockport really needs people to participate.
So could, could we put this on for the meeting in July when the committee application is filled up in light of the person that isn't here now? I mean, I didn't know this was coming.
Yeah, and I'm not, and again, Deborah is willing to serve at our request. It's not like she's trying to stay on longer than anybody's comfortable with her. She's really just wanting to be very careful on this.
One of the things that we struggled with years ago, a couple of years ago or three years, we, we actually wanted people to come before us. I mean, we know Deborah, it's no big deal, but when you want to be a committee participant, we'd like to have you in front of us so that we can actually see you ask questions rather than looking at a piece of paper. And, and I think if, you know, if, just to have some record of the committee application, if she wants to fill it out at a later date, that's fine. I can go with it tonight, but...
Is that what happened with Owen? Did he, I don't, not sure how that happened.
I don't remember. I know we talked about it, him staying on.
Yeah.
But I think he was, you know, I'm not even...
I have no, I have no concerns if she wants to stay on. I do think we should do an application just so we have it as a...
Have it on record.
Have it on record. We have the paper trail. Obviously, we know, we know Deborah and the work she does, but I think...
And I just think she would do a great job.
No doubt about it. Absolutely no doubt about it.
Because that's a complicated operation.
So Denise, are you saying that Eric would replace you as the second?
As the second, yeah.
And Eric, you want to do that? Okay.
Yeah.
Now, we don't have to vote, we don't have to do a vote, right? It's... It's a discussion item, so...
Okay, all right, yeah.
Okay. So Eric will replace Denise, and then Denise, will you talk with Deborah and just have her, just have her do the application? I just would like to, just to, from a paper trail, we have it.
Yep.
So, and thank you, Deborah, if you are watching for...
When is the next meeting, Denise?
It's in July...
After the 8th?
12.
Yes, after the 8th.
12.
So that way, we appreciate that willing, willingness to stay on because I know that there's a, a lot that goes in, and I know it's gotten to a really good, good place over the last couple of years, and we want to keep it that way. So... All right, the next item that we had is, is the McCab representative. So we're currently looking for someone to replace Bill Chapman on the McCab General Assembly and McCab Board of Directors. So he has been part of that since he was on the Select Board. It appears that they meet once a year.
That's the, the...
The General Assembly.
Assembly, the Board of Directors four times.
Meets quarterly, okay.
And when that says it needs some, next Thursday, that means in a couple of days? Three days?
Uh, next, they are having, they're electing a new or hiring a new executive director on Thursday. I know about...
This Thursday coming up as in July 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, actually, I thought it was the 30th. That must be July 1st, but anyway, that, I don't know if there's a whole me... I know that's a Zoom meeting, I believe.
That would make sense.
Okay.
Yeah, I got an invite to it. So I don't think that's a regular meeting.
Well, I was so glad Carrie brought this, because I've been a little bit, I, I don't understand, I mean, I know we have Brian and Orion now, which is great, but I've, you know, here, economic development is like the watchword everywhere, and it's just, would be wonderful that we could have a way to participate with McCab.
Yeah.
Yeah, Denise and I had a conversation about this, and it's an opportunity for you to appoint somebody who represent your views. How, you know, what, what do you want McCab to be involved in?
Yeah.
And that, that's how I would look at the appointments.
I mean, it's a regional economic development district, and there's a lot that the Midcoast, you know, we've got the broadband initiative, which is a key economic development driver. We've got our own economic development committee here in Rockport, but I think the region is really a, a critical...
So do we have anyone that's interested, is the key?
I was going to ask around. I'm not, I mean, I guess the idea is...
I've made a few calls. I've been shot down everyone so far.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but, you know, I would, I would think about it in terms of your own initiatives, you know, you know, who, what, where you want to see McCab go and who, who might fit that role.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So certainly keep that out there. If there's anyone on the live stream that has interest in that, please contact us. We would love to talk with you. Yes, take a look at the comments, see if anyone is raising their hands for that. And then our action items, certainly for anyone that knows anyone that might be interested. We can bring them forward. All right, our next item is our delinquent personal property taxes, and I know we've been talking about this for quite some time. There is a memo in here, Carrie or Linda, I'm not sure if anyone wants to walk us through that.
Linda, do you want to?
Sure. Okay, so as requested, you voted on abatements for the older personal property. Those have been completed. I think it was something like $14,000. So the next thing I have done is I sent out letters for 2020 personal property reminders, and then the next thing is to send out, and hopefully I can get them done before the end of the day on Wednesday. I'm going to send those, a copy of that letter to the ones that owe from 2019 to 2015.
Okay.
The, again, a little bringing up to speed for you guys. I mean, you're only allowed to go out six years, and we had stuff from 14 years ago. It isn't big money, but it's money. And we just needed to play catch-up and get things on an even keel again, and that's why.
So Linda, these will go out this week. These letters will start to go out?
Yes.
Okay.
That's great.
Yeah, that's good. I know we've been...
Then at the end of July, if they haven't paid, then we'll go to the next step, filing a UCC.
Okay. And how long do they have after you file that?
I'm not sure. We've never done that before, so I'll be working with the town attorney.
Okay.
Can, and I know Carrie will get John to give us an update or in your absence when you're out. Maybe we could get an, an update from who's replying, who hasn't.
Right. I'm going to have Wyatt taking care of a lot of different things, and I'll put that on the list for him to do.
Okay, so Wyatt will be the contact, okay? All right, any other questions or comments for Linda on the personal property tax?
Only one.
Yep, go ahead.
If they, if the taxes aren't that large and filing the UCC costs more money, are we going to spend the money to file the UCC, or are we just going to say, forget it?
Well, there's a couple of them that owe a fair amount of money, especially one. They did owe $30,000 until we did the abatements, but I think the total amount due for the ones that are outstanding are some...
About $50,000, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
But if there's...
Close to 50.
Small numbers and the UCC cost is, would be prohibitive to bother with, are we just going to just send the letter, and if nothing, we can always decide not to proceed that one, or?
Well, somebody's going to give me a list of businesses that are closed or a list of businesses are still in business, so we can weed out, I would think, the ones that have closed. I don't know how you can go after them. They've moved out of town. I have a few of them that are deceased, so we'll have to abate those or write them off.
Yeah, we'll have to weed it out some for those. Okay, makes sense.
But that, that also sets up the, the next years for...
Right.
You know, if you're not going to do anything to the year before...
Well, right.
Why bother?
Right, no, but this way, the precedent's getting set that, yeah, we're going to come collect our money.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay, our next item is to discuss the Budget Committee member options to finish out Robert Duke's term. As you know, Bob was on and resigned because of his son Jonathan, taking the town manager role. So thanks again to Bob for all of his service with the town. So attached are the write-in votes that we received.
Wow.
A lot of them.
I feel sort of bad I'm not on it.
I know, right?
I got two votes.
Right, congratulations.
Don't know how.
So how, so, so Linda, have we, I know that some, we have red, red notes on here, like, some people are already on the committee. They're not a res, they're a resident, not a voter. Have we made contact with everyone on this list, or?
No, I have not.
Okay.
But when we did the whole list of people who received one vote back last year during the election, and we had it on the ballot in November, there was, there's two people on this list in particular who expressed a concern, a desire to be on this committee.
Yep.
So I don't know if you want to...
Should reach out to them.
Yeah, reach out to those two individual.
Which two people are those?
I think Charles Placedit is on here and Richard Lane.
And we have how many openings? I don't even...
This is just for Bob's replacement at this point.
So I wondered about Hannah Demmons, because I thought she...
She just, she's off. She was only one year, and she never came in to get sworn in.
Oh, dear, okay.
Okay.
Like to hook Jared again.
Yeah, but he didn't seem too interested.
Yeah, when it said already on...
He said no, yeah, I would love to get him back on too. I don't, I don't know Charles personally. I've spoken to him on the phone. I don't know him personally, but...
He was on the committee before.
He was on, he served as Chair of the Planner Board when I first went on the Planner Board in like 1997. He, he was excellent at that.
Yeah.
So, you know, just, not, not against Charles, because I don't know him, but I do know Richard, and he's a, he's, he's a great public servant.
Charlie, Charlie Placedit has served on committees, you know, years ago when I first arrived. Lives in Glen Cove, three or four houses down on the...
I see him every year when I go check on his deck.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, do you guys want, does it make sense to just sort of figure out who's going to call whom first? Is that what we're...
Do you want me to call Richard and, and ask him to put an application in? I'd be more than happy to.
Yeah, if he's interested.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask why we're just not appointing the person that got the most votes?
Well, because we don't really know if they want to do it, first and foremost.
Okay.
So we haven't confirmed with all these people that received at least one vote, if they're even interested in doing it.
Okay.
I mean, ideally, we could start at the top and reach out and say to people, you had three votes, Jared, Jared, if you're watching, if you're interested. I mean, we certainly could do that. I think Linda's recommendation was Charles, and Richard had votes from the November election as well.
And had expressed interest.
And had expressed some interest.
And these are from the current election, and the three people who had the highest votes, we had three openings, and those were all filled from this list.
Right.
So this is just the other people that were, that received write-in votes.
Because Bob Duke's position wasn't really open on the ballot, so those aren't, this is just information, but it's not actually...
And I don't think you're limited to this list. This is just guidance.
Guidance, right. I mean, I think who, I mean...
I'd want to put my good friend Doug Cole on there, but I don't know, is he speak to me again?
Who would like to reach out to Charles and Richard and see if there's any interest?
I'll be more than happy to.
Linda will do that, okay.
Sure.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, our next item is the Select Board Liaison. So I, in the packet is the list. I think as we kind of talk through this, I think I was talking to John earlier, that I think we, there are other discussions we want to have with John Duke too, when he comes to really talk about the overall structure of the committees, the liaisons, where we need a liaison, where we need a committee, where we don't need a committee. So I don't know if it's our best interest of time or if there's anything that's absolutely urgent that we need to get someone appointed to, or if we might be better served to have those conversations with John, talk about the overall structure, and then go through assignments and see where we want.
I'm not aware of any urgency.
Okay.
Maybe when he gets here, we could do like a workshop?
I think we should.
Good idea.
Yeah, I think it's a really good idea, and I think we should talk about, you know, kind of the structure, you know, where we have representatives. I mean, almost all of these, I think all of them have staff liaisons, so, you know, do you have to have a, a Select Board? Some, some of these, we have two people on. Do you need two people? I think we just I think we just have, need to have a broader discussion about committees in general.
Yeah.
So I think having a workshop is a great idea.
Yeah.
Again, if there's something that you are absolutely dying to be on, then, well, we can do that in the short term, but I don't think there are any committees, to your point, Carrie, that is, it's urgent and we need to get someone on there right now.
As, as interest, I do, would like to look at the Harvard Committee, and as I was already on the RES Task Force, it only makes sense unless somebody else desperately wants to be on the RES Task Force.
And that actually is sort of, has stuff going on.
Yeah, that one, we kind of need, I think, today, make a decision on that one, because we are trying to schedule another meeting, which could happen anywhere between next week and the middle of the month, so...
Yeah, I mean, I have no concerns if, if you want to do that. Mark, any concerns with that? If Eric wants to serve as the liaison with RES Development, okay? Task Force, Eric, consider yourself on the RES Development Task Force as the liaison.
Since he was already involved anyway, it kind of made the most sense.
Okay. And then I will get Diane to get us a workshop scheduled...
Sounds good.
...in July, once John has a few weeks to catch his breath.
Couple hours.
Yeah, we will need a couple hours. Okay.
Excuse me one second. Speaking of Diane, I appraised all the department heads earlier. I could not have done this without Diane.
She's great.
She's amazing. I told John the other day on the phone, I said, "Do not underestimate this woman. Lean on her."
That's right.
She is amazing.
That's right. Okay. So our next point of order here is to go into our wastewater commission meeting. So I do need a motion or order for us to enter wastewater commissioners' meeting.
I move we exit as select board and enter as wastewater.
Do we have a second?
Commissioners.
Second. Oh, I got Eric. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. As part of that, we are going to go into an executive session, so can I get a motion for that, please?
I move the board enter executive session pursuant to one MRS, section 405.6E, to discuss a legal matter.
Second.
Second for John. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous? Okay, we will enter executive session to discuss a legal matter.
We're ready when you are, yes.
You are live.
Great, thank you. We have reconvened into our wastewater commissioners meeting.
I move the board to act on the wastewater budget as presented.
Second.
Eric's second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, all in favor.
Thank you, Carrie and Megan.
Thank you, Carrie and Megan, for that. We now need a motion to move out of wastewater commissioner meeting and back into our regular meeting.
I move the board to exit wastewater commissioners meeting and go back into the regular meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? unanimous. And then finally, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
This is where I get a little stubborn. Well, we may have to discuss it.
Do you want any discussion? Who's making a motion?
I move the board to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second? Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?